Good evening, I'd like to call this meeting to order. Today is Monday, August 19th, 2019. We're here for the purpose of the regular meeting of the Elmhurst City Council. It is 7:30, I would ask that you all rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. The Pledge of Allegiance?
To the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic where we stand, one nation, and we're not invisible.
That's just for all. Clerk Malone, I ask you to call the roll.
Kennedy. Hanquist.
Here.
Here.
Mulner.
Here.
Deuter.
Here.
Sabatino.
Here.
Leeder.
Here.
Dunn.
Here.
Bram.
Here.
Palmsky.
Here.
York.
Here.
Toledo.
Here.
Park.
Here.
Levin.
Here.
I have thirteen present and one absent.
Thirteen present, one absent, we have a quorum, we are in session. Onto Agenda Item 3, receipt of written communications from the public. At this time, is there anybody in the audience who has any written communication they wish to submit? Any written communication, please raise your hand. Seeing none, we'll go on to Agenda Item Number 4, Public Forum. This is an opportunity for anybody in the audience to address the council on any item they so choose. When you, your name is read, we ask that you make way over to your microphone, over here to my right, your left, and right over there by Chief Ruth. We are recording this, so we ask that you state your name for the record. Address is optional. Out of respect for others who may want to speak this evening, and respect for work that we need to get done this evening, we ask that you keep your comments to three minutes. If you run over your three minutes, I will give you a gentle reminder and ask you to wrap up your comments. At this time, Clerk Malone, is there anybody who signed up for public forum?
Yes, Mayor. We have Edgar Powell.
Okay. Please.
Good evening. My name is Edgar Powell. I am here to speak about actions that I observed at a previous city council meeting that I attended, held on July 15, 2019, around a month ago. In that meeting, there was a resident who chose to speak during public comment. His, he's actually right here, his name is Claude Pagash, and he often comes to city meetings to address you and to express his concerns. However, I noticed that many of you were not necessarily paying attention. When I looked at the dais during public comment, no less than four of you were distracted on your cellphones while others were glancing at the laptops in front of you. I even took photos to prove that you were on your phones, and I'd be happy to provide those photos to you upon request. Generally speaking, when we come here to participate in public comment, we do so to be heard. All I ask is for you to put your phones away to give us your full attention. The second concern that I have is about the accounts payable report that were approved, that was approved on July 15th, at the same meeting that I'm talking about. If you look closely at those payments, there were two payments listed. Both payments were for an INI reimbursement program in the amount of $5,150 to two people, one for Mr. Emil Sabatino and another for Alderman Mark Sabatino. The problem is that those payments were never pulled off the consent agenda, which Alderman Sabatino himself voted to approve. Essentially, he voted to approve his own reimbursement request and to pay himself. Perhaps it's all proper, perhaps you believe that it's okay to approve your own expense reports, perhaps the council is going to say something about it being a standard inflow and infiltration request, which I'm sure is true, and you're obviously going to defend colleagues on the city council because, frankly, it's human nature to think that nothing wrong has happened. And this is why transparency through laws like OMA and FOIA is so important, so that residents can provide an external perspective and let you know when we think that you can improve in certain ways. So, in that regard, in that spirit, I do have a suggestion. Perhaps we can set up a Board of Ethics or an Ethics Commission here in Elmhurst. Our Park District, the Elmhurst Park District has one, DuPage County has one, so I'm not sure why the city should be any different. Even Alderman Levin himself has experience from the city of Evanston, where, according to news reports, he represented an alderman in a corruption case over there. Maybe we can bring Evanston's example here. If an ethics board could be created here in Elmhurst, then potentially improper behavior could be fully investigated, leaving the community more confident in our elected officials. Thank you.
We have Claude Pagash.
Claude Pagash, 566 West Gladys. I appreciate young man's defense, but I'll continue as long as I can with coming down here to point out what I think are things I don't understand. As at the last meeting, and the council voted in $500,000 for the project on Addison. Man's not gonna pay his billing permit. But then I picked up the paper. City's gonna spend $1.8 million in the area. $1.8 million, won't anybody say about spending another $800,000? This project's been kicked back and forth, I don't know how it starts, but eventually there'll be a set of drawings from an architect at the building department, and they'll see if they match the wishes of the city. Then somehow it gets up in development and planning, and I'm sure the building department tells them what's happening. Thing got voted in by a development planning presented to the council, council says, "No, we ain't gonna vote for it." Negotiations take place, changes are made, brick is gonna be used, city's gonna throw in $500,000. There's a problem. Architect or the structural engineer wasn't told about any brick. He didn't design a building to carry a load of brick. Let alone, somehow he does. Had to cost somebody something. Well, where does $800,000 come in? Understand you want to replace the electrical. Well, come, well, they hasn't got the right of way, and they've had it, and you couldn't get, get them to change anything unless you pay for it. Dealt with them. But then there's all those buildings along York Street, they're all fed overhead. Well, you just buried the cables. How does power get from that underground system over to the buildings? And who pays for that? And who pays for the connections inside? Come, well, they've seen a look at it, but they ain't paying for anything inside. I just don't understand. You blew the building on First and Addison, and let alone right across the street is a precast building with brick veneer. You go to Addison, and we're handing out money to this guy like it's for nothing.
Mr. Pagash, I'd ask you to wrap up your comments, please.
So where does the problem lie? With the building department, to analyze the drawings, or the development planning that wasn't told? It just cost me $500,000. Plus, I still don't know what you're spending $800,000 on.
Okay, that's it for public forum for those who signed up. Is there anybody in the audience who did not have an opportunity to sign up on the sign-in sheet before the meeting, but wishes to address the council at this time? If so, please raise your hand. Seeing none, we'll close public forum for the evening, onto announcements. Any announcements from the dais? Agenda Item 5. Alderman York.
Thank you, Your Honor. So, this Friday, August 23rd, is the 24th Annual Golf Classic for Elmhurst Children's Assistance Foundation. Mike, Dr. Mike Calcagno is this year's friend of the children. The event is being held at Fox Run Golf Links in Elk Grove. It starts at 11:30, still looking for golfers to play in that event. You can go to ECAF, the number 4kids.org to register. May I have one additional announcement? I just, this is my first meeting back since the bike race, but I just wanted to just give a real quick report on the bike race. It was a fantastic day. Thousands of people showed up to watch the race. It's amazing to see the activity on Grace Street and all the yard parties. We had 552 racers this year, over 485 from last year. There were 485 last year, 550 this year. At least 40 states and 20 countries were represented in the field this year. Both the pro races were field sprints at the end, which is the most exciting bike racing that there can possibly be. There's nobody in it, there's nobody out of it, it's just a mad dash for the finish, and I think the crowds really loved it. It was a great day. This is the first year we actually had to shut the race down to haul off an injured racer. It's bike racing, it's dangerous, but I'd like to thank Superior and all of Elmhurst Public Safety, police and fire for the wonderful response that they give the race and they give the residents of the, of the race course. Every year we put this event on. So, from our race committee, thank you, and we're just terribly excited to have another great day racing here in Elmhurst.
Thank you. Any other announcements? Seeing none, we'll go on to consent agenda. At this time, is there any item on the consent agenda any alderman wishes to pull, to vote no or provide further comment? Alderman Bram.
6.16.
6.16. Anyone else? Okay, I'll now entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda minus item 6.16. Motion by Alderman Hanquist, second by Alderman Mulliner. Clerk Malone.
One second, Mayor.
No problem?
No. One second. Hanquist.
Aye.
Brennan.
Aye.
Mullner.
Aye.
Deuter.
Aye.
Sabatino.
Aye.
Leeder.
Aye.
Dunn.
Aye.
Bram.
Aye.
Palmsky.
Aye.
York.
Aye.
Toledo.
Aye.
Park.
Aye.
Levin.
Aye.
Thirteen ayes, zero nays, and one absent.
Thirteen ayes, zero nays, motion carries, Agenda Item is approved minus item 6.16. Onto item 6.16. This is an ordinance, I would ask Clerk Malone to read the ordinance.
An ordinance amending section 44.74 entitled Yield Right-of-Way Streets and section entitled Stop Intersections enumerated of Chapter 44 entitled Motor Vehicles and Traffic of the Elmhurst Municipal Code.
Okay, to put this before council, ask for a motion to approve the ordinance as read. Motion by Alderman Palmsky, second by Alderman Levin. Alderman Palmsky, I believe this came as a result of a report out of your committee.
Thank you, Mayor. I defer to Alderman Bram, who pulled this.
Okay, Alderman Bram, you pulled this, floor is yours. Whoop, there he is. Sorry, I was looking the other direction.
Thank you. Excuse me. I'm not gonna belabor the point that I made a couple of weeks ago when we discussed the report on this. I do have a question, was this, was the report recommending, and two weeks ago passed, the intersection at Oneida and Chatham and Oneida and Kirsage?
No, just Oneida and Chatham. Why does this, oh.
Okay, 'cause the resolution before us, or the ordinance before us, makes a statement, at least in the whereas, that both are moving forward, and I just-
Alderman Bram, I hate to interrupt you, but can you point out where on the ordinance you have this, you-
Which 2?
Discrepancy?
Is it the first or second page?
It's right up in the title.
2.
So there's, it almost looks like it's repeated. There's Oneida and Chatham and Oneida and Kirsage?
Correct.
And which one is it we need to remove? The Oneida and Kirsage isn't, is incorrect? Is that correct?
That's my understanding.
Okay, go ahead, Alderman Bram, and then we'll talk about a remedy after you're done.
Okay. Other than, I think, you know, a scrivener's error on that account, I just wanted to voice my concern. Two weeks ago, I made statements that this does not meet the MUTCD. Today, it doesn't meet the MUTCD. City staff, two different consultants, two different studies, said that this intersection does not warrant stop signs. So I have concern moving forward with something that has been evaluated twice by the city council, twice by city staff, and twice by a city hired consultant, both times being recommend, recommending keeping it at yield, well, one was moving it to yield signs, and the other, the last one, was keeping it with yield signs, but we're moving forward with what I would consider no evidence to move forward with stop signs.
Okay. I'll address one thing that Alderman Bram brought up, which is, under the written ordinance in the whereases, we appear to have a duplicate, and an incorrect duplicate at that. Mayor? One second. First, I want to ask city attorney, is this something we can consider a scrivener's error and correct now?
Absolutely, yeah.
Okay. All right. Alderman Levin?
Alderman Palmsky was pointing out that it's the Kirsage reference that is not just in the whereases, but it's in a number of subsequent sections in the actual ordinance, including 2, 3, 5, 6. So, I think the motion would have to be to remove throughout the ordinance the references to Oneida Avenue and Kirsage Avenue.
No, I'd like to actually, we don't have a motion, right? We have a, Alderman Bram, we don't have a motion to amend yet. I'd actually like to take this back to committee, please.
Well, at least take it back and fix it.
Right.
I don't think it goes back to committee because it's an ordinance, but at least take it back to staff and have them write it correctly.
Yeah, okay.
So, let's see, who was it? I'm gonna ask the mover in the second to withdraw.
I didn't move, I was just saying the motion would take this.
No, I'm saying your, your original motion.
Oh.
Remove your motion to put this before council. Yes and yes. Okay, so we're gonna pull it back and fix it.
Point of order?
Yeah, absolutely, Alderman Bram, what's your question, or what's your point of order?
I guess I'm just wondering if, because it was opened and discussion was initiated, can you do that?
Absolutely.
Revoke the motion?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Movers can do that, that's why I asked them to do so. Okay, that is withdrawn, that goes back for staff fixing. Onto Agenda Item 7.1. This is a report out of finance, I'd ask Clerk Malone to read the recommendation.
It is therefore the consensus of the Finance, Council of Affairs, and Administrative Services Committee that the city council direct the city attorney to prepare the documents necessary to modify the current line of credit agreement with the Fifth Third Bank to provide for a $10 million balance, an adjustable interest rate based on the one-month LIBOR rate plus 65 basis points, an unused loan balance fee of 20 basis points, and extensive of the term so that the agreement expires on October 31st, 2021. Noel Toledo Chair, Kevin York Vice Chair, Michael Bram, Tina Park, signed.
Okay, to put this before council, ask for a motion to approve the report, the recommendation as read. Motion, Alderman Toledo, second by Alderman York. Alderman Toledo, your report.
Thank you. So, tonight we're talking about extending our line of credit, increasing it by, from seven and a half million to 10 million. I'll start off by saying, why, why do we use a line of credit? Why is this an important tool for the city? It's a very flexible, short-term, low-rate funding source. It's an alternative to a bond, which we would typically, is also another tool we have in our toolkit. We can draw up or down, up to the maximum limit of the line of credit, which we're talking about tonight of increasing. It's very flexible, we can renegotiate if we don't need that much in the future, we can renegotiate it down. If you read the report, you see that we do pay a small amount of interest on the unused portion of the line of credit. So why are we talking about increasing this tonight? The line of credit has primarily, for the city, been used to help fund costs within TIF districts. We have a new TIF district, and we have a lot of redevelopment going on, as you all know. So this line of credit will give us some flexibility to pay for some upcoming redevelopment costs in some of our TIF districts that we are expecting to incur. The terms of this line of credit, we went back to the bank that has extended, been extending the existing line of credit to us, the terms are better. We're increasing the amount, but decreasing the interest rate that we would pay from currently the LIBOR, which is the London Interbank offered rate. LIBOR plus 80 basis points. The proposal that the Finance Committee is recommending to you tonight would be the LIBOR plus 65 basis points and ending in 2021. We do repay, the way that the line of credit works, we repay a line of credit, we always have to pay interest payments. We utilize TIF increment to pay down principal as that increment becomes available within TIF districts. Last question I wanted to address is, you know, what, what might an alternative be? Another way to pay for our anticipated costs, which is a good question. As I mentioned earlier, we would typically and can use bonds to pay for some of the anticipated costs in TIF districts. Both are good tools, it's good for us to have both tools in our toolkit, and I will say that since the time that the committee discussed this report, many things have, a couple of things, kind of historical things have happened in the bond market. So, we're currently, staff is currently working with our advisor and looking at whether or not we may want to utilize a bond, but that would take about two months, just from the time of deciding that we want to go out to the market to going through all of the paperwork and the public notices, so we're keeping this on the dais tonight. It's good for us to have this flexibility. We need a little bit more powder in the powder keg, I don't know what that cliche is, but, but rest assured that the council knows that we are looking at, just because the bond rates have been changing quite a bit and are very volatile right now, we are looking at whether or not that might also be a good option for us. And if that is the case, we can always renegotiate this at a future date, if that's the course of action that we decide to take at a later date. So I ask you for your support. Thank you.
Okay. Comments or questions? Alderman Dunn?
Just a couple of questions for the committee. Is, so we're raising this by $2.5 million. Is there, is there a definite and immediate plan to use that additional 2.5, 2.8 that's available? And the second question is, is there a projection out into the future with economic projections, investments in the city where we reel back that line of credit at any time in the future?
Waiting for that feedback. Yeah, there are two specific needs that have been identified by staff that is the reason why we're bringing, why this is being brought forth. One is the possible bearing of utilities in the alleyway in the new downtown district. And then, the second, Mayor, I'm asking, I'm wondering if I can discuss the second?
Potentially, I mean, just regarding acquisition?
Yeah, potential lien acquisition. Yeah. So, that's my answer to that question.
Alderman Brennan?
Thank you, Mayor.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Is there a projection to take the level of the line of credit down in the future?
Right, sorry, thank you, Alderman Dunn. Yeah, so, as I had mentioned earlier, this, we can always renegotiate and pull the line of credit back down. When increment comes up, as I think you're a member of the Joint Review Board, the Joint Review Board goes through a process annually, identifies projected expenses and debt repayment based on the projections for the TIF, and so this would be one of those things, if, if the Joint Review Board projects an sizable increment, the staff and the Joint Review Board could decide to utilize some of that to pay down the principal, and then we could then renegotiate the line of credit so that we don't have as much unused portion.
Alderman Brennan?
Thank you, Mayor. Alderman Dunn did a brilliant job asking my question, thank you.
There you go. Any other questions or comments? Alderman York?
Thank you, Your Honor. So, at the beginning of it, when we start a TIF district, there's a plan, a budget that's put together, and, you know, a lot of time, there's like, you know, $50 million, $100 million worth of investments to be made, and in the beginning of time, there aren't increment, there's not increment to cover those investments, so we use this short-term financing method to kind of get the ball rolling, if you will. Many communities that have TIF districts will start out by bonding for a certain portion of their investment, of their investments that they're, that they're more or less required to make under the TIF law, so this is just the way we do it.
Any other questions? Seeing none, I'll ask Clerk Malone to call the vote.
Kennedy. Absent. Hanquist.
Aye.
Brennan.
Aye.
Mullner.
Aye.
Deuter.
Aye.
Sabatino.
Aye.
Leeder.
Aye.
Dunn.
Aye.
Bram.
Aye.
Palmsky.
Aye.
York.
Aye.
Toledo.
Aye.
Park.
Aye.
Levin.
Aye.
Thirteen ayes, zero nays, one absent.
Thirteen ayes, zero nays, motion carries, Agenda Item 7.1 is approved. Under Agenda Item 8, Reports and Recommendations of Appointed and Elected Officials. Mayor Morley, that's me. Couple of quick announcements. I know summer's coming to a close, but it does not mean summer is over. American Legion is still hosting their Cool Cars Under the Stars, Thursdays at 6:00. 6:00 to 9:00, encourage you to go there. Can you get a hot dog when you're there, Alderman Mulliner?
Yes.
Okay. Also, just when you think summer's coming to an end, I must remind you, that means that Beer Fest is right around the corner, and Dave Oberg is in the audience. Beer Fest is September 14th, 1 to 6. Is this our fifth, fourth, fifth Beer Fest? Have so many, I can't remember.
He has a sign.
I would encourage the aldermen, any aldermen who has a front yard with a great corner, Alderman York, or others, to pick up a sign from Dave Oberg highlighting this fantastic event that's right around the corner. Also, I've been asked by a couple of folks in town, it seems like it went up overnight, the Culvers is going to open on the 26th of this month, is that correct? The 26th? Fantastic. And then, I'll also remind council and residents of Elmhurst that Labor Day pushes our meeting off to that Tuesday, which I think is the second. Second, third? Third. It's the third. Okay, that's it for me. City manager?
Nothing, thank you.
Any other reports? Alderman Bram?
Yes, thank you, just one. I would just wanted to speak to, there was many questions about the road construction on North Avenue. As far as I know, far as city staff knows, as of last week, being the latest and greatest update, that it is on plan to wrap up by the end of this month. So there's been discussion that signs say otherwise, but end of August is the plan as of today.
To dovetail on that, I will also encourage any resident who is interested, on the first page of our Elmhurst website, you can pull up a map of all of the construction going on in town, you may find that helpful. I know that construction season can be tough, but when people ask me about it, I tell them it could not be happening, and then we could have crumbling roads and curbs and what have you, so I know it's tough to bear while it's happening, but just remind you that it's gonna be better when it's over. Okay, that's it for reports.
A resolution approving and authorizing the execution of a development agreement by and between Lennar Multifamily Communities LLC and the city of Elmhurst, Cook and DuPage Counties, and Illinois.
Okay, to put this before council, ask for a motion to approve the resolution as read. Motion by Alderman Hanquist, second by Alderman Mulliner. Alderman Hanquist?
Thank you, Mayor. This is the resolution approving the Lennar project on Addison that we discussed at the last city council meeting. I ask for your support. Thank you.
Okay. Additional comments or questions? Alderman Dunn?
Just a few short comments. I am happy to see this on the agenda tonight, as I mentioned last meeting when the report was being discussed. There is an incentive request on this, some for landscaping, also for an improvement to the facade, which we are sharing in that, our partner, by means of waiving permit fees on this particular project. I was happy, very happy to see in the agreement, very detailed specifications on the building materials. So the way they read is, it would be of that quality or better. I think that's a positive thing in this agreement, to, just to make sure everyone is, everything's transparent as to what type of building we will see on that property. And if this should pass tonight, from what I'm told, ground will be broken in next month. Supportive of this? Thanks.
Alderman Bram, you had your hand up.
Thank you. When we discussed it last, I'm happy to see the Lennar project moving forward. I'm just not in agreement with the total investment that the city of Elmhurst is contributing according to what's proposed here tonight. As part of this, it states that the developer has requested financial assistance from the city in order to proceed with the proposed development due to certain extraordinary costs to be incurred by, incurred in connection with this development. I'm in agreement with some of the things that are proposed, that we have done for other developments. The sticking point for me is the $500,000 for the change in facade. I said it last time, I'll say it again, this is going to, the proposed change in facade would also increase the value of these apartments as well, so there's definitely a benefit to the developer as well. I don't see any extraordinary costs to warrant the $500,000 of waiving permit fees.
Any other comments? Clerk Malone?
Kennedy, absent. Hanquist.
Aye.
Brennan.
Aye.
Mullner.
Aye.
Doiter.
No.
Sabantino.
Aye.
Leder.
Aye.
Dunn.
Aye.
Bram.
No.
Palmski.
No.
York.
Aye.
Toledo.
Aye.
Park.
Aye.
Levin.
Aye.
I have 10 ayes, 3 nays, and 1 absent.
10 ayes, 3 nays. Motion carries. Agenda item 9.1 is approved. On to other business. Any other business? I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Motion by Alderman Mulliner, second by Alderman Toledo. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Adjourned. Thank you.